Everyone, let's stand before the clock. Today is John fourteen six. Jesus said to him, I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man comes through the Father but by me. Hell is no joke. Jesus came to save you from it. If you believe in Jesus, believe Jesus is the only way to heaven. Amen. Linda will get us started.
Sure will. We did a supplemental appropriation from the juvenile court in their CASA funds opers account in order to pay for December payroll deductions. The court had employees in the fund in 2024, but nothing for 2025. Opers has taken out a month in arrears, and this was done on January fifteenth. I'm also reporting on items approved on January twenty second. Recended the motion from December thirtieth, twenty twenty four. As she is unable to start at this time, that read approved hiring Constance Aiman to the position of part-time adult day service assistant number ten forty-one dash one to be effective January twenty first, twenty twenty five, at the rate of nineteen twenty-three per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. For community and economic development, accepted and approved the Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Income Report and the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Semiannual Report for the period July one, twenty twenty four, through December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and to further authorize the electronic submission of these reports. For the Maintenance Department, approved the motion of Connor Loza to the position of Grounds Maintenance Supervisor, number nineteen thirteen, to be effective January nineteenth, twenty twenty five, at the rate of twenty-four seventy-four per hour, ring the oven, step one, with a one hundred eighty-day probationary period.
Good morning. So the next item. Is it correct to the amount that was previously? Why am I not getting it correct?
Do you need a second?
No, I have looked. Okay. We need to, item number three is we are going to adjust the amount that was previously motions for pay request number fifteen for Infinity Construction Company. There was listed as one million fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. It is actually one million fifty thousand four sixty-five twenty-six. It's just a clerical error there. I apologize for that. So the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board amend the motion from January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, to correct the amount to read approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number fifteen for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Jockey County Courthouse Expansion, GMV phase number one and two expenses in the amount of one million fifty thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Mr. Biden.
And then for today's financials, we have appropriations transferred to the Sheriff's Office for miscellaneous refunds reimbursed from some checks that were deposited into the general fund, a supplemental for job and family services in the building improvements account of their children's services fund for the youth center project, and a supplemental in the Commissioner's miscellaneous accounts in the general fund for equipment, which is covering eight hundred megahertz radios for the Department of Urban Services and the dog warding, our contingency account, tax levies and assessments account, operating transfers out account, capital transfers account for the courthouse project, and also our reimbursement transfers. There are a few cash transfers here, one from the general funds court technology, a proportion of their twenty twenty-five funding, from the general funding, community development, and that's in bond, board of elections for the fourth quarter twenty twenty-four interest transfer, from the general fund, the PD for gas smoke proceeds from October through December of twenty twenty four. Among the encumbrances are travel requests from the Auditor's Office for the SRI User Conference, from the county police court for the Ohio Court Management property and training conference, and from child and family services for the Child and Girls Fair in America twenty twenty-five conference. There's also a then and now from the county police court to family pride for therapeutic behavioral services that were not previously covered. On the vouchers are two hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars from the Auditor's Office, the ISSG Incorporated for year two of the master services agreement for the county's property management software, one hundred and four thousand and one hundred and five dollars from the Commissioner's Office to Raven Mental Health Center for the first quarter youth center operations, one million fifty thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents from the Commissioner's Office to Infinity Construction Company for pay request number fifteen of the courthouse expansion project, and also thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents for maintenance, the metal field farm gardening for replacement, boat tractor, and that was the tractor that was being used over at the safety center. So it's a pretty bold one that they're in an auction potentially on the county's auction site.
Adrian, can you tell me about the gas well proceeds? What, there's a gas well on DD that?
On their property, yes. And we get payments for various gas wells around the county, and it was determined that the revenue that we received from that well would be reimbursed to the board GD.
Oh, all right. I didn't know that. I remember every time when I read the schedule.
Yeah, that's, there are gas wells that are on other departments' properties.
Yeah.
But given the arrangement with that's a bomb, it was determined to turn those over to them instead of the county people.
How frequently do you get those payments around the town? Wow, I mean, it was a little like bucks or something.
Yeah, it wasn't very much.
Yeah.
And it varies from year to year depending on how active the well is.
Right, yeah.
They may activate it when prices are a certain amount and they can get more out of it. I don't know, but it does fluctuate, but we get a payment every month from them.
All right. Are those wells heating buildings as well?
I don't believe so, not. I believe the one over here on the old county home property.
Me too.
They do use that for that. I'm not sure about the other ones. I'm pretty sure this one does not keep that.
I want to talk to you about maintenance, but I'd like to have a list of all the gas wells and what properties, and what the revenue is.
Sure. Yeah, we, Debbie maintains a report when we get their checks, and it shows where all the money is going and which well it belongs.
In the next couple of weeks, so.
Sure. Yeah, there's the fairgrounds. We give them their proceeds, but we do theirs only yearly, so.
I'll move to financials.
Second. Yes.
And then number five, we are amending the motion from the payroll and accounting authorization funds to include water resources. We had inadvertently left water resources off that motion, so I'll go ahead and read this. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board amend the motion from January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, to include water resources to read approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the revised accounting and payroll authorization funds for the Department of Aging, Building Department Commissioners, Community and Economic Development, Dog Warding, Veterans Services, Maintenance, and Water Resources.
I'm going to approve, and number five.
Second.
Okay, and then number six, and we do have Andrea Bedka in the audience here today from Women's Safe. I'll go ahead and read the motion. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board request the county auditor to distribute the balance in the Domestic Violence Fund, Fund Number Twenty Seventy, Women's Safe, the local agency designated by the commissioners to receive such monies. This allocation is to be paid pursuant to sections thirty-one thirteen point three four of the ORC on the twenty twenty-four year in the amount of thirteen thousand two dollars and sixty-nine cents.
So my only issue with this that I brought up was it seemed like per the code, this request should have been made by October first of last year, and the letter was dated December thirtieth. So that was my only concern, but I mean, we have one, one shelter.
Correct.
That we can send it to.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I did read over the ORC, and I would think that in a situation where you have a number of different agencies that can receive these funds, it would be important to get that early on in the year because there's kind of like, there's a process where they apply, then we respond and let them know if they qualify and all this. So given the fact that there is only one in the county right now, I reached out and asked for the information at the time. So I think maybe next year we will take a different look at this and maybe try and do things a little more to the letter of that.
Yeah, put a reminder on your calendar, right? It's for each shelter, whatever, for their.
Well, now I know why so I would get the request so early in the year than that because that's how the ORC is written, so.
And it seems like historically they have submitted the request.
Yes.
Early.
Yes.
This year.
I'm assuming it was just an oversight at night, so.
You have any questions?
No.
There are more.
I'll move to the other numbers.
Second.
Mr. Biden.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Thank you for your time again this morning. Airport ordinance requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute grant contracts under fiscal year twenty twenty-five Ohio Airport Program Matching Grant for the General Aviation Airport, including Jockey County Airport Authority and the Department of Transportation Office of Aviation. This is the matching grant for taxiway construction. This is the third and final portion of the plan for that.
And this has been promised previously to the airport?
Yes.
So we're just, this is kind of an honor.
This is the final, final piece. And in paper, with our match of one hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars, the airport will be getting like three point one million? Yes, from the FAA. Great. Yeah, bring in our Jack's dollars back home.
I'll make a motion to approve seven, but general, we just need an L on the end of that word.
Yes. I second the motion.
Mr. Biden.
Yes. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming. Have any other questions? I feel more ready to try to answer.
Yeah, well, as a new commissioner, give me, like, explain to me like I'm a fifth grader, how does the average geography benefit from the airport?
Well, the number one way is we have the UH Airmid helicopter base at our airport that benefits the entire county. We also typically will base a squad ambulance there as well. We have a number of events where we bring the community in to experience the airport. We give free rides to a lot of the kids that are seven, eight, or eight to seventeen, and a number of other programs that benefit all the community. Couple years ago, I brought. School tours, yes. Collaborating with Penn State University Aeronautics, they have a program that's hoping someday that you could utilize, can't say jog up. We are still working on that, and actually recently I've been talking with Hiram College as well. They are doing something. I'm also working with the ACE program or the ACE Academy through Cardinal Schools. We're putting together a mediation program for those kids as well.
Thank you.
Just trying to expand what we do too all the time.
I've been to the pancake.
That's pancakes in northeast Ohio.
No promise. I've been to a lot of them.
I know. That's our item. Everybody knows the best. Yes. Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Leadership geography class, right? Are we asking for that? But I mean, they did provide, the juvenile court did provide an explanation, but it's fine. It seems like because CASA is under this, the juvenile probation court, they will send, I'm not trying to explain this, but they will send their GALS and so much to training at some kind of, it's more expensive than seven thousand dollars or six thousand dollars.
And that's what we're looking for in the past, why?
Yeah, some sort of explanation for why they needed more than the common police court. And it seems to me this request is just asking the credit union for credit increase. I mean, we're not granting the credit increase. We have no power to do that. So we are, we'd be approving their request to the credit union, and then the credit union would have to decide.
They try.
And then they have to change their policy. They have to come back, you know, do their limits, then we agree this, the six thousand limit that we have to maintain here. Sure, so I'll make a motion to approve eight.
Second.
Mr. Biden.
Yes. Do you have any other questions?
Hello, good morning.
Just a reminder, since we're on camera. Statement angle, what do you prefer?
Absolutely. Good morning, Jessica, full director of Jockey County Department on Aging.
In bid like a fiscal officer, first.
Good morning. So we are here this morning asking you to approve and execute resolution number twenty-five zero one three, and that is a certificate of need for renewal of our one mil levy for the purpose of providing and maintaining senior citizen services or facilities. So this levy, the senior services levy first became a levy in the year nineteen ninety-five. It was a one mil levy at that time. It was replaced in two thousand and nine with a one mil levy. I started with the department in twenty thirteen, so I had the pleasure of renewing that levy in twenty fourteen with the collection starting in twenty sixteen, and again in twenty twenty, we renewed that replacement legend from two thousand and nine again with the collection in twenty twenty-one. So this is the last year of collection for that levy, and we are asking to be able to put that on the ballot for the May sixth election, so we can do another renewal, no new tax, but we're going to renew that two thousand and nine levy at that one.
And would this be a year earlier than expiration?
No, it will not. This is the last year of collection, so we will be collecting beginning twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thanks.
So can you talk a little bit about what your cash carryover was this year?
Yes, I can. So our unencumbered, I will give you our actual unencumbered cash carryover, if that's okay, as opposed to beginning balance. So we are at about two million, three hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents. And I will say that was about four hundred thousand more than we would have initially anticipated, and that was because we were successful in getting grants from the Western Reserve Area Agency on aging at about four hundred thousand dollars more than we originally anticipated, which impacted our carryover.
I mean, the one thing I'm a bit concerned about is, is the relative cost right now of the primary versus the general. Because my understanding is this would be a lot less expensive if we do this in the general, because there'd be more issues and candidates on the ballot versus if we do it now where there is one statewide issue. Our West GE, I think, has a levy on the ballot, and then we'll, I guess, see where the chips fall, but I mean, it seems like we're looking at about thirty thousand dollars to put on the ballot.
It appears to be, when I reached out, yeah, when I reached out to the board of elections, and I spoke with Scott and kind of asked him, how does this work now that the state has come on? They explained that the state does pay for their issue, and then when additional parties join, the cost then, this split between the individuals. At this point, I'm not sure if anyone else is joining. Clear, clearly, the more individuals who join, the lesser the cost. But yes, we are looking in the realm of the mid top of thirty thousand, unless there's been any changes since I last reached out to you.
And we don't know what it would be if it was pushed up till the general election with this tag.
I could only make an assumption, which is not very safe to do, that it would be a lesser amount if there would be more individuals participating.
Yeah, I mean, I think just in the future, it's too late now. Did you, sorry, did someone know the answer to that? Oh, I thought I heard something. Like, it's too late now, but I guess I'd like to see these go on the general election ballot where is less cost. And I, like, and I get, like, your timeline right now is tight, but in the future, like, let's get ahead of these a little better so that it does cost, and that the money can go more directly to services and serving the community rather than just, you know, the cost. I mean, it's the same process. If it's the general election or the primary election, you just have to pay more for the primary. So I don't know who else is coming up that might be listening, but like, let's try to get ahead of these so that we're doing better for taxpayers.
I think that's why a lot of the levies are early.
Yeah, the November fire event. Yeah, and then if it fails, you have multiple opportunities. Yeah, I mean, I think my other, my just comment is I know that probably since you passed your last levy, the law has changed as far as how employees can advocate for. So I just want to make sure you're aware. I mean, I'm not advising you, I'm just saying, making sure you know that. And you can talk to your council about what you're allowed and not allowed to do.
Yes, our APA is wonderful, Laura Chappell. She actually, in two thousand and three, when we changed to the certification of the paperwork, as well as the resolution came out, she also sent information about participating in levies, in the do's and don'ts of what can happen, what can and should, should not happen in the county office buildings with employees, et cetera. So we do have that guidance.
Great, absolutely. And then Jessica, did you talk about already, like, what percent of your budget coverage is the levy versus other sources of income?
Yeah, absolutely. And if it's okay, I will use what, twenty twenty-five for reference. So we are anticipating the levy to bring in three million, two hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Our total revenue that we are anticipating is four million, one hundred nine thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars. So the funds from the levy are about seventy-nine point four three percent of the budget. Now, we do receive grant funding primarily through Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging. That accounts for about fourteen percent of our budget. What's interesting about that grant is it is a reimbursement grant. So we do have to have staff, employees, services in place to provide services to then submit for reimbursement. Furthermore, there is a cash match required for these grants. Typically, it's fifteen percent cash match for our human social services and twenty-five percent cash match for our Alzheimer's programs. The additional amount, about six point five seven percent, that would make up our total revenue budget is from fees as well as donations. And fees, when we have senior center outings, we do pay the initial bill, but our seniors pay, pay to play, if you will.
And do your fees actually, like, when someone, you know, pays for their bus trip or whatever, does that actually cover the actual your costs or?
Wait, that will get you talking about your estimate.
That depends by each instance. So, yeah, each of the sites, the coordinator takes, it's a cost and so forth, estimates the attendance they expect and calculates the cost that they're going to pass on to the senior. In some cases, they, the coordinator determines that in their budget, they have enough to cover out of their budget rather than passing the cost on. In most cases, the cost is passed on to the.
Okay, fully, fully passed on. And can you be an out-of-county person and like a county truck that's essentially subsidized by taxpayers?
Yes, but those people do pay an annual fee to be a member. Some of them are family members and friends, you know?
Right, right.
And so start to like to participate, so we do collect a few.
And I will also add, they are on a waitlist until all the Jockey County residents get first priority. I would like to be clear about that.
I was just curious. I mean, I just thought of the question, so, yes. I'm good, you're good.
I have five.
So I'll make a motion to approve, as in nine.
Second motion.
Mr. Biden. Mr. Biden.
Well, thank you so very much. Good one.
Really often I think program coordinator for community and advanced development, I have a little bit easier request, you know?
Community and economic development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Ohio Department of Development Office of Community Development Organization contact form. It's our ocean users. We use that to apply for our community development platform. It is just our website and it lets us who can use it, who cannot. We are removing Jerry Morgan and Linda stepped up and said that she would like to be on there. We can add a commissioner if you choose. The, you can view it. It pings you when we do a draw or if we do an application. So we do have our year twenty five community development block grant coming up this year. So. Yeah, if you guys would like to be on that, you could touch your mail. So I have to change the forms though before you find them.
So what, I'm just a little confused. So what is the, what do you, do you need approval?
I need approval.
That seems a little different than what you're describing to me.
Well, it is. So there is a user form. It's a contact form. We have to remove people. The other one, there's a user and rules form on there and you can be a view only. You can have permission to do draws. We've given permission to Linda for all of the. I don't know if you have a copy here. It's hard to describe.
Okay, but so it would be for Mr. De Borak to execute the forms
Yes.
to make these changes.
Yes, correct. Official to do that. And then there's a data company confidentiality. That is signed also.
Let me keep it.
Second motion.
Sure. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should have made you pancakes for how long we have to put it in this morning. Mine would of course be the best.
Exactly.
You know, all my kids taught me.
Although my first pancake is a little, that's happened to that.
We can't even get the waffle maker on to really want it. All right. Well, good morning. First action that I'm asking the board to take is to reappoint the board members that are listed item number twelve that have served on our family services planning committee. I made sure that I submitted the statute. This does further, you know, explanations to what the family services planning committee is as if they are an advisory board to John and Family Services. Actually, Mrs. Bolt is a member of the Family Services Planning Committee. And it is really, we have meetings that are quarter quarterly downstairs at John and Family Services in the Carlton Rose. Usually the meetings are about an hour and it's where my staff gets an opportunity to highlight quarterly what basically has occurred within John and Family Services. There's usually a lot of moving parts within our agency. We also have my director submit reports to the board. The board can obviously ask questions. We also give highlights on what could be coming out, what changes can be coming from the administrative, from the state central government. I can say the people that I have highlighted and that have served have done a great job. If you, a lot of people know these individuals, they are really the, many of the who's who of whose J F S's services can impact, whether it's the sheriff's department, whether it's mental health, whether it's Department of Aging, whether it's our universities, our schools, these individuals represent that. I know that you are looking to come on to the Family Services Planning Committee, which I think will, you will understand to be a great learning opportunity, but also an opportunity to share your input with our services. Typically, historically, and I know Commissioner, you've had some questions in regards to how these individuals come to beyond the committee. And we can always look at changing matter or what have you. But they typically have come, the board has asked me for my input. I have submitted the names. The board has been able to ask questions about these individuals. I did, hopefully got my email. I did.
Send it to them yesterday.
Okay, got the titles of the individuals, but if you in the future want more background information, I'm happy to submit that. I would ask that the board at least consider to appoint them for the time being. If you would wish to make changes, I would understand that. But we do have a meeting coming up and I would like to have my board in place if that would be okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Wish you a break. I, wish you a walk.
Yes.
I think it was twelve, or did it switch?
It does. There's a, there's a new.
Oh, sorry.
Eleven and twelve are gold of your family services.
Okay, fantastic. Sorry, I printed it out yesterday, so my numbers are off.
I was gonna joke and say, I mean, the motion is nine. Just to keep it interesting. Yeah, we've had a lot of exciting meetings, which feels a little dull, right?
Of course, at my expense, you know, it's okay. It's my.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. I'm very excited about twelve, sir.
You have to do one.
Yeah, thirteen. Okay, yep. Gotcha. So, and I will feel like I'm going to be in a courtroom. I just wanted to print this out.
Oh, we got an exhibit.
Your honor, may I approach? This is just to show you that Amy Bersh is on this committee now.
So she's a reappointment then?
Yes. Amy Bersh is currently serves on the Great Lakes Regional Council. I will give a brief explanation of what it is. Great Lakes Regional Prevention Council is the only government, quasi-government entity that receives preventative preventative funds from the state treasurer. So they, these are the only dollars that are out there from the state that go to serve prevention, child abuse and neglect prevention. Believe it's in the range of about ten million dollars a year, which is a drop in the bucket, obviously. I know that. So this council is divided up into regional groups throughout the state of Ohio. The council that serves Joga is the Great Lakes Council, which has the following counties that are in the exhibit that I provided to you that show who represents those entities. Each one of those counties has a representative. Amy has already been serving, served the last two years on this group and has done so very well. She's our most longest tenured social worker on staff at J F S. And I, I previously have been, I think, the orchestrator of work has appointed me. Prior, I had served my time. Amy has been serving her time, done it well. And she gets a vote towards the different projects. What happens is different entities throughout the region submit proposals of what, what services they think they can provide that would best reduce child abuse and neglect prevention. They receive, read these proposals and then these individuals vote on them. And then those that hit the vote, hit the dollars. So she's done an excellent job on that. This likely will be her last term. She's probably going to retire soon. But she, again, is our most senior social worker and I recommend that you guys reappoint her to that council to continue with her duties.
So what sort of programs do they fund? Is this like educational?
No, it's, I'm trying to think of a lot of, well, education, parenting practices, a lot of our parenting practices. Some are employment related because we understand the statistics are the odds are better. You'll have a better, safer home if you have, you are employed, gainfully employed. Ultimately, a lot of stress reduction type of things. We have, I'm trying to think of the one that's currently at Catholic Charities. There's a program that they're doing currently at Catholic Charities that essentially helps people become employed. It also works on parenting classes. Ravenwood has run some programs before. So it's ultimately these, these different entities submit proposals, they get voted on and they get the funds to provide those classes.
And some of the money comes back to Joga? I mean, you're saying Ravenwood.
Yeah, the council makes sure that all the different counties are touched. So there's no one gets left behind. And so a lot of the time, sometimes you're more concerned that Cuyahoga will eat up the majority of these funds. Even Cuyahoga, when I served on, it was very mindful that, no, we need to make sure that we touch on, you know, Joga County residents. So no one gets left behind. And that's why we want these representatives there.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Wish you a break. Hi. Wish you a walk.
Yes. You mentioned unemployment yesterday at my NACO meeting in Joga County. It's two point six percent unemployed. So we have various workers. You know, getting dealt with these.
What is it statewide?
Statewide, I think it's four.
Yeah.
Of course. Two point six, it's, it's a landmark for Joga.
Yeah. That's great. That's great. Margot's doing a great job.
Yeah.
All right, next, and I hope I go to disclose this while as it's different ages. So with that being said, I am asking that the county and I, hopefully you got my email last night. I created some charts and documents for you to kind of highlight where we're at with our levy funds. And I also want to remind the board that I did try to go out in the fall. Yeah, and there was a document, some documents that did not go through the state. And so I, I'm mindful of the cost of the levy when it comes to putting on the special election ballot. I still, in my humble opinion, believe it's worth the bite at the apple because we only get so many bites at the apple to pass these. This also is a renewal, just so the board is aware. J F S is supported by two operating levies. One is a point seven qualified levy. So it's the old levy that is a lesser burden to the taxpayers. And then this one that I'm asking for a renewal is a point five mil levy that was originally passed in twenty fifteen. And again, hopefully you've had the documents or copied that of the ones that I sent you last night. If you take a look chart, you guys have it beautiful prepared. So with that being said, if you take a look, we were back in about twenty sixteen, because obviously once you pass these levies, it takes a while for them to kick in and to start receiving those funds once it's passed. But we were, and also there's another document that I submitted that has all our fund balances with the P C S A funds. We were about four hundred thousand dollars within the month of, I think it was March twenty sixteen of literally becoming bankrupt when it comes to our P C S A fund.
P C S.
Public Children's Services Account.
Thank you.
I just apologize. I speak your acronyms.
So tell us what that can be used for.
So this is all our money is that can go anything towards children's services. J F S is largely, or children's services, our levies are probably eighty to ninety percent of our whole operating funds for children's services. The state, thankfully, under the Dewine administration, has kicked in some more additional dollars. But they are really a drop in the bucket to what these levies do to support my staff. But more importantly, the placement of children and youth, not just throughout Joga County, not just throughout the state, but oftentimes it can be beyond our borders in Ohio where children need to go. Now, I am very much hoping that the construction of our new youth center will allow to bring many of our children home. That is what this project is going to be. I'm greatly appreciative that Mr. De Borak has taken such a great interest in this project and has been very helpful with his knowledge. But right now, our current youth center really maximizes the way it's, it can, can really work is about seven kids. Our new youth center will be able to go up to sixteen, which will be amazing. And these kids will not have to go most likely out of the county as long as obviously, you know, their behaviors are congruent with what that type of facility can provide. But that's going to be a huge change and shift for, for our kids, for our county kids. And I think will also bring in the end a cost savings to the county because Ravenwood, their per diem that they have currently provided for the current youth center is pennies on the dollar compared to what some of these other facilities are throughout the state. Ravenwood, I believe, is currently between about seven hundred, two hundred and seventy dollars a day per kids. Many other facilities that I send kids to are in the upwards of a thousand dollars a day. Now, it's, so obviously, and we're going to have to figure out what that rate is going to be with a new facility, but I still think it's going to be incredibly less than some of these other places. On top of the staff time that I have to have my workers, because we have regulations that say we need to meet with these kids so often, see them face to face, drive there, drive back. Costs, wear and tear on cars, wear, you know, all that being said, so I'm really looking forward to that. So of our current cash balance, which again, I, as of December twenty twenty four, was seven point seven million. I'm thinking about six million of that is spoken for with where our estimated costs are for the youth center. We are also hoping for a million dollar grant from the state to help with that as well. That'll put us down to a little bit less than two million, which still makes me nervous. If you take a look at the document that I provided to you, our receipts and disbursements on a monthly basis can swing seven, eight hundred thousand dollars just within a single month. Just because that's just the way our costs are. They're expensive. And so a lot of people talked about J F S's cash balance. I'm telling you that it's not what it is, and we've been very carefully saving these dollars for this project, which I think will pay dividends for the county for a long time coming, not just in short term, but long term as well. So.
Have you applied for this one million dollars from the state?
Yeah, actually, your office has. It is, it's been through the commissioner's office, which was for Ravenwood as well. And so it, it is a reimbursement grant, so.
So you pay the money.
And J F S has already started paying, I think we paid already two to three architect bills already for the youth center.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. So I mean, so you're saying it's going to cost six million dollars for the youth center.
I'm holding us, but that's what we have. That's our kind of, and they know that, the architects know that. That's our end all be all amount for this youth center. Right now, the most recent document that I've got has it estimated about five point three. And they're telling me that that's hopefully conservative, but as we all know, when you get into construction and you put a shovel on the ground, what happens, Mr. De Borak?
And surprises along the way.
Exactly.
And some, you know, minor changes that, you know, they offer you this or that to be in the building or outside the building or whatever. So you make choices along the way of the construction.
Yeah, so it's, I'm, it's, it's now that I'm kind of really truly overseeing the project. It's, I'm, I'm really hoping that it stays within budget, obviously.
Okay, so it's a six million dollar project. We're hoping to get one million dollars from the state.
Yeah, well, in addition, so the project could be up to seven.
So you're going to spend more money on it if we get money from the state?
That's, that's been, that's always kind of been the budget of this project. That's six with maximum of six.
So it's a seven million dollar project.
But it could come under that. We're hoping that it comes under that.
So, yeah, when you're saying the five point three.
That's five, five point three is what the most recent estimate that they had given us for the whole project, which was under, which we were very happy, was very much under the seven or six million that we worked.
Craig, did that include the, have any of the fixtures and equipment or is that over and above what's in that contract?
I wish I had the document in front of me, but I thought, I thought it's, yeah, I thought it did include that.
From the meetings that I went to.
Okay.
Could you make sure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's, it's five point three million dollar project. We're going to get one million dollars from the state. How much have we spent so far?
I want to say a hundred and some a thousand dollars just in architecture.
Okay, so it's minimal.
That we've spent so far.
Yeah, okay.
Just architecture stuff.
Okay. And then you're saying your cash balance is seven point seven million?
Seven point seven two five as of December twenty twenty four.
Okay, and then do you have a separate fund that's for these, like a building?
It's in a contractor. It's, it's, yes, it's, it's. It's in a contractor. It's, it's, yes, it's a, it's.
It's a part of that seven point seven.
Correct.
Okay, we're not like shell gaming it. Okay. Just.
I, I don't run any Mexican operations.
I know how that works. I figured out this much already.
You're good. Yeah, no, there's no shells at J F S.
Okay. Um, and I guess the other thing I have questions about is it seems like this levy has been suppressed the past few years. So could you talk about that a little bit?
Happy to do that. So, um, again, we are, uh, I'm very much trying to be transparent and a steward of taxpayer dollars. Um, I always, I, I do not want to collect if we do not have news. I think that's a part of the, I don't want to say the game, because it's not a game, but part of the, the process and part of, part of having a levy is there, especially with children's services, um, there are waves that comes, um, in the, in the teens, when I first started, twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen, we had a monstrous opiate crisis. We were spending two point two million dollars a year just in placement costs alone. We don't know when that is gonna come around. Um, if, if you look at the chart, um, that I provided, and I'm having to provide it to the, you know, media or whoever, um, COVID, if you see what the years, we, people weren't laying eyes on as many children. You, at schools that were not in, in person, I know you're sensitive to this issue. Um, you had people not going to therapy appointments, people weren't laying eyes on children. So we weren't getting the referral calls, which was a huge concern. I mean, J F S directors and children's service directors throughout the state would freak out because we knew stuff was happening, but we just didn't get to see it, and people weren't making referrals. So our placement costs during COVID weren't through the roof. But at that same time, we were also collecting for the youth center. So our, our, that's when our cash balance went up. Since COVID has gone and since we started construction on the youth center, um, you can see that already we've gone from a cash balance of eleven million, now we're down to seven. Um, just in a matter of a year and a half, you can see how much, that's four million dollars, our cash balance can swing, you know, that quickly just with our costs. So it's not, um, i- i- it's, 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 it can move quickly. Um, and so, and again, I wanted to make sure that you guys could see that, um, that it's with us, it's very fluid. Um, and that's why we are so grateful for these levies and that we need them. And I always want to make sure that, you know, again, we are gonna be that steward that will suppress it. We suppressed it once, um, because we felt like we could do that. And then we also suppressed it another time. However, that is one of the commissioner's offices, Adrian's here, can I, can explain? Um, that's where the letter went out to the constituents. We suppressed it, but the commissioners made, um, made it whole. So it really wasn't a suppression, it was just a relief to the taxpayers.
Right.
So that wasn't because it wasn't, uh, we didn't need it. It was because of that tax issue.
I think Adrian has.
Yeah, well, that, that's why I just want to make sure that that was brought out, that the, the commissioners suppressed that and made them whole in order to mitigate the increase in taxes to the residents because of the increase in property values. So it didn't affect children's services, but the general fund did see an increase. So we, uh, reduced the overall tax burden from children's services and made it up through the general fund.
And then what are we seeing now? Because I know that, that decision was for what years?
That was for, yeah, it's for last year, last year's collection, which would have been, uh, twenty twenty three taxes.
Okay, so should we think about what we want to do about that, um, reevaluation, kind of like windfall money this year?
So this year, the budget commission did, uh, um, suppress the children's services fund again. This, it wasn't the, the full two point four million. It was just one million this year, and we're gonna see the effects of that and, and how it plays out, and then we can make a determination next year.
To make them whole as, as we did.
Correct. Yeah, it's, yeah, they're gonna get the million dollars from the general fund.
We just wanted to decrease the shop tax movement process.
And we were able to, we were partnering that together is, is what we did. And I just want to make sure the board knows, and I'm sure they already do, is that we review this year to year. If we need to do it again, we'll suppress it again. And so we, 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 it, it's not just, okay, we're gonna put out five years, we're automatically gonna collect. But i- i- it, like I said, it actually flows with needs. If we have another crisis, yeah, we have to collect, but if we don't, we're gonna give it back, and that's always gonna be the case.
And is this, remind, is this a qualified levy or unqualified?
The one you're voting on is not a qualified. The one that we're gonna be doing, because my levies were back to back, so we'll be doing another one either in the fall or in the spring of next year. That's.
Let's do it in the fall.
If, if I'm eligible, I will.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
If that one's eligible, I will.
I wanna get ahead of these. I mean, at least that will be a good notorial year, so there will be options in the ballot.
Exactly.
Right, versus this year, just, I mean, there's really nothing.
Issues.
Correct. And again, we did, we wanted to go in the fall, but, yeah. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, and I just, I just want to be conscious of that balance as we build the youth center, your cash carryover, and just make sure we're responsible for the taxpayer.
Yeah, and like I said, Jim, absolutely is, is, um, I mean, he's my co-mani. He's had the last couple of weeks.
Two, three times a day, we talk about the youth center. Have a look constructive, um, diet engineering meetings at this, at this moment, too.
Yeah.
Get the price down.
Absolutely.
So Craig, this levy is a renewal, not a new release.
Both, both, both approvals.
Understood.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Christian Verdi, hi.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And, uh, the next item, um.
You're still up here.
Oh, yes. I told you. All right, so next we are, uh, are we in the agency credit cards?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the next couple of items are, um, some changes to, just so you guys know, J F S has a separate policy and procedure manual than the county. There are a lot of things that mirror each other. Um, but because we are a department that has a lot of different moving parts, a lot of different funding, types of funding and things of the nature, we really need to be separate. Um, with that being said, um, myself, we work very closely with Linda on the credit card policy that has already been adopted by the county. Um, all I did was essentially take that policy, put it into the format of our, our policy and in, implemented. So in order for us to take advantage of the benefits of the new county policy, I need to ask this board to approve for it to go into our policy and procedure manual.
Do you have anything to add about sixteen, too, so we can just approve those two at the same time?
Those, okay, those are several different numbers. Okay. This is, since I'm coming up with a credit card policy, over the course of years, you end up finding that you need to make tweaks to, uh, your policy, whether it's a typo, whether it's a change of address, which, and I actually provided each of you with both red lines.
I appreciate you doing that, because that's helpful to see. Some of them, the red lines were pretty minor, so it was.
Yeah, so there are things you pick up on over times reading through it and you realize. So I provided, again, the red line and what it is gonna be. Some were just minor, very minor tweaks, some were addresses. They're all very ministerial changes to our policies, nothing, um, that is really, again, substantial, but the fixes that need to happen. So since I was coming up with a credit card policy and follow, figured I could do those at the same time. So that's what those are.
Yeah, it took me a second to figure out the, the smoking change. I'm like, why did I make this? Oh, because you moved.
Yes. So we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, the hospital would appreciate it if my staff walked all the way back over there because smoking is the only thing.
Well, I just saw like the raisin one.
I mean, if you want to look in the cold, though, you'd be asking a lot from my staff to be able to.
If they, if they smoke anywhere other than.
I think I've had some people quit since.
So all are moved to approve fifteen to sixteen.
Thank you so much.
Second motion.
Christian Verdi, hi.
Yes. Executive session?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to, uh, go into executive session, Department of Defense, Veterans Services, the Department of the Board. We're in the executive session for the, for the matters related to security.
Awesome, thank you. Sure, you. Hi.
First, please.
Ian, Craig and Glenn?
Yes, please.
It's very long at all.
I got it.
No, actually. State your name and your department.
Charles Kinsatch, Maintenance Department. And I have number eighteen on the agenda. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute the agreement for professional design services with CQ Consultants Incorporated/ Redanther's Architecture Incorporated to provide professional design and architectural administration services relating to remodeling approximately eleven hundred sixty square foot of basement space in the GRC County Courthouse Annex Building in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
So this is for the, to act as the general contractor and for the architectural services?
Yeah, this is purely the AAH services.
Okay, and then what's the anticipated cost of that whole project?
Right now, it varies. We won't know until the engineering is done, but I would, I would estimate somewhere between one fifty and three fifty.
Okay.
And the reason is, is we're trying to minimize the impact with the new laboratory that has to be built. You have to, you know, jackhammer the floor up and put new plumbing in, the HVAC has to be expanded, the ceiling needs to be raised a bit. So we're trying to minimize that by reconfiguring the space. So I'm going to give you that range right now, but I'll look.
That's a good range.
Yeah, once we get there.
There like a specialist in there or anything?
Not, no, that's all been taken care of.
I'll make a motion to approve eighteen.
A second. Yes, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Boris Water Resources Department. Item nineteen on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the agreement to extend contract execution date pursuant to revised Code one fifty-three point one-two for the McFarland Great Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project, extending the date of execution by sixty days through April third, twenty twenty-five. This is, normally we have that sixty day period to sign a contract because of the EPA and the funding for them to do that, or we need to do this.
That's why I was gonna ask why there was a funding.
Yeah, it's the, because of the timeline with the EPA to approve the law.
Okay, very good. I'll move to approve the item eighteen.
Second of all.
Commissioner Brady. Hi, Commissioner.
Yes.
Item twenty on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Business Incorporated for maintenance service and installation on our telemetry and control systems, including meter calibration at various wastewater and water district facilities within the Department for one year period effective January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, in an amount of fifteen thousand, five thousand on the wastewater side, ten thousand on our water district side. Apparently they help us with any issues with the SCADA and the controls for our BFD drives. They're the experts that can tweak the timings and our guys are being trained to pick that up now currently with the team that we have.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion to approve twenty.
Second.
Commissioner Brady. Hi, Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Item number twenty-one, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board grant permission to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed reemployment of retired rehirement Dan Spada to the position of Chief Building Official Number eleven zero one. This public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five at ten AM. Notice of this public hearing will be advertised on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and on the county website.
Can you say retired rehirement?
Three times really fast.
I was like, well, that's tricky. I'll make a motion to approve twenty-one.
Second.
Commissioner Brady. Hi, Commissioner.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve the addition of Grade E nineteen to the executive pay table to be effective January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Brady. Hi, Commissioner.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board appoint Adam Lickie as alternate for James W. DeBorec to the Georgia Trumbull Solid Waste Management District Policy Committee for the year twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion, yes.
I'll second. Commissioner Brady. Hi, Commissioner.
Yes.
At this time, we have a few items for discussion that we would like feedback from the Board about. The first one is NAWACA committee and subcommittee appointments. I'm going to ask Christie to talk to you about a conversation that she had with the folks at NAWACA this morning to give us some clarity on this.
Okay. So as we know, you as Commissioners get to kind of decide what committees you would like to sit on at NAWACA. For clarification, I asked this morning if there was a requirement by Board action for you to determine what committee or subcommittee that you personally wanted to sit on with NAWACA. And she said there's no formal action that is required if you simply want to change the committee that you're sitting on, that you just have to let them know in advance of the Board roster approval, which we said they're meeting tomorrow. If there would be someone that you would need to appoint to a specific subcommittee, like we took action with, with Mr. Boris and an alternate, then that would have to be done today. I am going to notify them so that it would be in place for the year for the meeting tomorrow.
I know to find out that I have all my places covered.
Okay, so I made, I made some requests about switching. Because I wanted to be on planning. Essentially, I just wanted an engineer to be on that. I think it was planning.
Planning.
Instead of, I don't remember which one. I was on equity and something else, and I suggested to switch that with Commissioner Spiterli.
Okay. He's not here to provide feedback, so I'm not sure. There's a timing element with this, right?
Yeah, we've done that tomorrow, so. Yeah, we just have to submit a letter or an email to them with her request to change to different counties.
I can call, contact Commissioner Spiterli with change and make sure he's okay with it for tomorrow, or do you, what do you want to do?
Well, I just want to have an end hearing representative on that.
I'm comfortable with that, too.
Yeah, so I just wanted to switch off the one I was on so that we could have some of those Commissioners. And then they have that policy. I think that's right, policy. I want, yeah, I wanted to get off equity and policy and get on the running instead. Yeah, I think that was because Tim was on policy. Yeah, this year, yeah. So that's one of those policies that led me further than I would have managed to.
But since there's no action required, that there's, it's a little bit less pressing. I mean, we can get it done by tomorrow, probably.
Sure.
Yeah, we just need to get it done by tomorrow. Yeah, we just, sudden notification that she was requesting to be moved from policy to something, I think.
Okay.
And off equity.
Do you want to do that?
That'll be gone, too.
No, maybe. Well, near development. I, I suggested for that one that Gina Hotstetter. She was on another committee here, I noticed, and it seemed like their timing would work out so she could just stay for one meeting. I forget, who was on that initially?
Does that work for you, Gina?
It says business advisor, sorry. Were you on the yes or no? You were on. Were you, they have you listed as business advisory? Yes, yeah, so I think she was on business advisory, and then I was thinking she could perhaps do economic development as well. Okay. You just have to take action to avoid charges for that. Okay.
She will be a breath of fresh air on those two, or in those committees.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Gina Hotstetter to the Economic Development Subcommittee of NAWACA.
Second.
Commissioner Brady. Hi.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, maybe.
Better believe it.
The other two items under Board discussion are a couple of suggestions that Commissioner Brady has brought to our attention about some procedures that she would like to see addressed by the Board. And I sent these to you guys to read ahead of time and think about. The first one listed is the procedure for billing Board of Commissioners Board appointments. When she sent that to me, my response was, this will require quite a bit of administrative capacity to, to do this. We can. But I do remind you, we're running an eight-person office on six people right now, so I might not be able to do it like, like that. But if I have a sense from the Board that this is the direction you would like to go, we can certainly get to work on that. Is that, how does that look to you, Commissioner?
I've always, I've always tried to promote reaching out to the ninety-six thousand people in the county and make sure that we have application process and review, and then we go to the voting here in an open meeting. So that's always been my thought process.
And I think we always do have to vote on the appointments, but what she's suggesting is advertising three months in advance in a variety of channels and to develop a standard application form.
I was gonna say, just to be clear, this was like something I wrote in like two half minutes.
I, I understand.
These weren't like well thought out, yeah, well thought out changes. These were just kind of things I was throwing out is what, what it could look like, but I'm, I mean, I'm very fluid as far as, you know, with the office things, like a good procedure would be to follow, but I just think we should have some sort of procedure like, hey, this is coming up. We advertise it so that a variety of people have the opportunity, let they know about it.
Right.
You know, I think there's, there's board openings that, you know, ninety-nine percent of the county has no idea they could apply to if they wanted to. So I just want to be able to expand that, so people that are maybe interested have an opportunity to apply, and then we have, we have a process that we evaluate applications as well, not, not just we get a list and we're.
I mean, they have a policy in place first quarter of this year.
Okay.
But I mean, as far as timing for me, I just, I would like to have something before we have another appointment coming up tonight.
Okay.
But I mean, but I don't know when that is. Yeah, okay, so that's great. I mean, that's what, that's what I was hoping. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we were, we were talking about that a little bit yesterday, having different boards that you appoint to with, like, how things have been typically done in the past versus where we migrated to doing a little differently, including the library appointments. We've kind of totally revamped how that was originally being done to where we are now, advertising both places and options coming here and then you're reviewing. And you're, you're making an appointment, because that's a sudden appointment. So we've already kind of started to migrate towards some of the things that she's looking at doing. It's just, there's never been any formal written procedure. Yeah, I just think it'd be good, like, you know, we know something's coming up, and here's the, here's the procedure we go through. That's what we're gonna do. That's what we do for everyone, whether it's the library board or the BD board or the planning team, whatever. That's what we're gonna do. That's what we do for everyone, whether it's the library board or the BD board or planning machine or whatever. And then we just implement it every single time. It's predictable. We do things.
Okay.
And getting back to NAWACA appointments, uh, I'm gonna have to research on my own to see what Medina does, because Medina has two commissioners and a township trustee. And their world, just like us in Jogga County, is sixteen townships. And that's the majority of, you know, the land population is from townships, not that one city, three villages. So I'm gonna, right.
Possibly two.
Possibly two, yeah.
Oh, who's in unvillage?
Aquila.
Oh, right.
It's not gonna be cleared in town. So I just wanna study that. Bring back that information to all of us.
Okay. Yes, I'll do that.
Restructure it next year.
And some counties have like their engineer at the seat, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they're not like an alternate that they're hard to see.
Correct, and that's been a lot of dealing.
So if we can just drill down a little bit and see what all the other counties are doing and what their options are. Yeah.
Right, yeah, what our options are, yes. Jogga County, based on your population, has three seats and they are the commissioners. Um, and that's how it's designated in the rules and regulations. So because we could not get our engineer added as an additional seat, um, they, they had started to put a, the engineer on as an alternate, so it would
But, but we could restructure in many different ways. You know, you have the top spot to be the engineer, the top spot to be one commissioner and one, but I'll wanna research that.
That involves changing your rules and regulations of NAWACA and that is something that you would have to talk to Chris about getting changed. I know that's been an ongoing thing since I started here. It hasn't been changed yet, so if you guys can do it, hey, I'll go.
Right, I mean, Medina is the first place I'm gonna find out, because I know that their first choice is two commissioners and a township trustee. So. Okay, great.
Cause it's, it's outlined in rules and regulations as to how they are defined by these kind of.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, the last one is the uh, proposed policy on public comment during board and county commissioners meetings. Um, I know this has been looked at numerous times and um, nothing was ever formalized. And um, here's an opportunity again to look at it and decide if you want to do something formal. And I'm not quite sure then once, if you did adopt it, would it be disseminated to the public? Would it be included in our policy? I mean, I'm not quite sure where it would live. But um, there's some room with specific guidelines here. Uh, but one concern that I have is um, if you're going to make people stick to two minutes, you have to make people stick to two minutes, even if we have to be rude. So I don't know if you want to consider something that specific, or if you just want to put in something like, you know, a reasonable amount of time. Okay, well, Carolyn's, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brady's preference would be a specific time period. Um, but she has given us some real specific things, public comment time period only up to twenty minutes unless extended by emotion of the board. People have to be recognized by the board, um. Everybody needs to give their full name and address. You get two minutes. Commenters are, have to behave themselves and be nice.
They're asked to. They don't have to, actually, if you read it. They're finally asked to.
And of course, to remind the public that there are other options for making their feelings known to the board through um you know, questions or comments through the email address, through the website, by mail, all those kinds of things. So I just brought this to you as something to consider. Obviously, we probably not want to take any kind of action until all three commissioners are here. Maybe we can come back in a couple of meetings and discuss again, unless you direct me to do otherwise.
Should we send this to the prosecutors?
Actually, thank you.
Suggested that you.
Yeah.
And she was.
They don't have any objections to it.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, my, my thought, Commissioner Dorard, is just, you know, for, for everyday meetings, you don't really need a policy most of the time.
Right.
Um, you know, the chances and so forth are usually very respectable and we're able to get through the meeting efficiently. But of course, every once in a while, there's a big issue that comes out and that's when we really do need a policy and a better, in my opinion, to not just dump something on the public right, right before a big hot issue. But whether to have this policy in place that is um, you know, implemented and followed every single time and is predictable to um, your commentators.
I, I like the, the format of this and I'll wait till we get a full portion of it though. Since it's already been in the prosecutor's office and back, I'm very comfortable with that, so.
Okay, so we can put it on for approval. Um, next week is, Commissioner Spitaleri will be here. That's what he left.
Um, yeah, and then the only thing I did talk to, to um, the prosecutor's office about potentially, I was just curious about what the law is as far as limiting comment only to people who live in Geogga County or perhaps, you know, and there'd be a bunch of asterisks to that, right? You'd have a, a business interest in Geogga County own property, Geogga County reporter, Geogga County, whatever. Um, just because I noticed at, at the meeting on the twenty seventh, there were so many commenters that did not live in Geogga County.
Right.
And I mean, there's one thing I, I've learned about Geogga County, people are very sensitive about outside influences. Trying to, trying to, you know, change how we do things here. So I was just curious about that. I knew that that was something that um, Sheridan School District requires that you live or have a business interest in Sheridan School District in order to provide public comment. Uh, so we talked about that recently. I, I personally feel like it's, it's probably not necessary and it just adds a lot of complexity. She, um, but Ms. Chappell did say that if you had a meeting where there was a ton of people that wanted to speak, you could make a motion at the start of that meeting to only limit it to people in the county or, you know, like I said, those sort of asterisks on the stop rate, whatever.
Sure.
Um, so it was just, you know, just some things I was thinking about.
Well, I definitely like to have a mollus and will continually work on this hopefully next week if we can. Hold on.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to see just, you know, have, we have a public comment and then you can just have a, like, you can refer to the, the, you know, policy that's on this web address, you know, on our, our website. But then give just some general bullet points um, here, so folks don't have to refer to that and they have some expectation of how the policy will be.
Right, we may have an official to post it here in the room.
Oh, sure.
In some permanent way, so people can know what the, what the rules are.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I had for board discussion.
Anything?
Um, I do want to let you know that I um, spoke with Magnoa um, from the fair board yesterday afternoon. Um, the fair board did take action at their last meeting this week um, to change what their process was, their thought process was in both regard. Um, so I've asked her to provide the updated information um, as well as the changes that are made. She specifically said that the dollar amount was supposed to stay the same. It's a promise, same square footage, it's just going to be two for links, not one. They're not connected, they're separate. Um, and so that I would need that information to work with Ms. LaChapelle to update and amend those resolutions that we need to do, to, lots of change. Um, and I asked her whether she was down on bond. I know that her and Ms. LaChapelle and their insurance agent have been going back and forth on it. She sent an update yesterday to me and um, Ms. LaChapelle, um, so I'm kind of waiting to see where we are on that, but um, they've asked the architect to do an updated rendering of what it would look like. And so once she gets that, she's gonna supply that to me, so I can provide it to you, I sort of did. We're kind of hoping this target date of maybe February fourth.
Kind of sort of maybe.
Is it?
Interesting. All right. That's all we got.
Now it's a public comment. Everyone would like to uh, have their comments or questions.
Nobody got fired today, but it's still early. Well. Here next week too.
Okay.
Watch your drink.
Second one.
I'll.
Can I just, I know this, that, I'm keeping my. The oldest is, is your own board. I almost. We're really on a policy.
And I need to start.
Right. That's really good. And things changed and then bring that and Gina here and what happened to anybody. Talk about it tomorrow. Fine. Yes. I don't see anybody out here. Great, I just, I came to the meeting eventually to establish. That's next, the policy. Here. You. It's called, you know, on their website. So she has two hundred sixteen, two hundred sixteen. One county in Kansas, well, while she's on there. They, they just, I'm not agreeing, they succeeded every two minutes. Which is, well, the last time I attended. The three commissioners, like, I'll be on this one, you be on that one. And they, somewhat, and normally. But they basically, it was like, check your cards, you take these. Well, I guess, I guess, should any interim or alternate team have some probation? Preferably. There's probation. I do. Okay, got it, thanks. With a question. I'll go. You'll only have your questions with a question. With a question.
Well, if you do that.
I'm doing, I will be in the, I will attend it tomorrow, which, you know, it's not my job to ask you the question.
Andy's taking my questions.
So at any rate.
The seat I want.
Catching that fleet, okay, hey, okay. Less than a hundred percent clear till I said something to less than, saying, well, Jim mentioned to me that he was not able to attend the wire leases. Well, I don't think that's what he's hoping.
You doubt and I'll doubt.
It's got to be, because in carpool, carpool.
Take care. What are you going down to? We'll have to change that.
You should have Gina though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in Painesville, I think it's.
Yeah. See, it was fun, but hopefully. For. See, there's where he is even. Good. It'll be, it'll be nice.
So now we know you're a master.
Christie, I need to talk to you about the certificates of aid and the differences between.